So Mayor has indicated she may be a few minutes late. Or Castleberry also may be a few minutes late. Former meeting that ran over in the latter had an emergency shelter. Who's our acting mayor?
We don't have one.
We don't really have one, because we have. Yeah. You're next in line, yeah.
For the time being.
You can go out with a bag, man. Get Coladina to learn her. Here we go.
I guess we need roll call.
He's gonna be late. Mr. Hope?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Present.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Strayer?
Present.
Mr. Castler is gonna be late. Mr. Goss?
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Mayor Heath and Kelly Castleberry, who will be arriving soon.
Okay, well, if you were the mayor, you would say, right, I'll turn the meeting over to you. I am going to in turn turn the meeting over to Dusty Steele, who's, as you all know, the chair of our DDA, or now, what do we call it, Dusty Main Street? Michigan organization. And he's gonna do a relatively brief presentation on what that means for us, what nice steps are going forward with that program. There's gonna be a lot of activity coming up here in the next few months, some of which involves, or they would like to have the city commission involved, and so with that, Dusty, I'll turn over you.
All right, well, first I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your great partnership with the Michigan Main Street Organization. It wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for you guys, because you stepped up. You made that commitment to 35,000 years for five years, which allowed us to get into financial position, go out and search for a director, which we're still doing, we're still working at the U.S. Department of Health to do with our Main Street director. As you know, the release on October 28th, Governor Weber announces three new cities to the, to the Main Street program, and that is Adrian, Coldwater, and Roger City. There are about 24 cities in the state of Michigan that have been designated as a Main Street community. There are three sections in the Main Street community, there's the Engage Level, which we were in. That was the first three years in which we had to learn how to adopt their approach, the four-step approach, and to start organizing our committees and our different work plans in a fashion that they did to show that we had a commitment to that. Of course, COVID happened through all that, but we still maintained all of our meetings and did very well. If you looked at our agendas today, they're color-coded by the four major sections of design, promotion, economic vitality, and organization. And each of those have categories where we're gonna learn and develop how to be more effective at executing work plans and transformational strategies in the downtown area. Right now, we're in Area Nine of the 10 sections of Michigan, and our partners in this area and region in the southeast, Listfield, which received Mastery Level, which is the next level. Howell won it last year, Bone City won it this year, is Main Street America. Mylan is still on the Select Level, we've watched a lot of the stuff they did to help us get to where we were going. And Celine is a master of this, so pretty good names in our side in our area in the southeast that we're gonna be able to share resources with and do work with to improve our effectiveness as a board. The board is a hands-on board, as you know, there's a lot of activity that needs to be done that's very hands-on. We've had a lot of different new faces join the DDA, and a lot of young energy and blood in there that are working hard. And if you guys didn't see the video, I'll pass it around with the video that we had to send up and blew up being at Lansing to do the presentation, was done fantastically, I thought, had very big impact, and we were pretty excited about the whole thing. The first step in the process, we're gonna be experiencing something called the baseline assessment. And this is where they go to the community for input, and they gather a lot of information from all sectors of our community. They're gonna do a number of meetings, the first of which will come November 30th, which is the first meeting of the day of the meeting from eight to nine thirty would be the Main Street Board of Directors, and then City Staffs after that, and we have building owners, which we're acquiring names right now for a survey that we put out there. Actually, Michelle put out there, and we're starting to add to it, and there's quite a few names showing up. Then we're gonna have downtown business owners, and then you guys, the city officials. Either we'll have to announce that as a public meeting, or if we just get three, and the rest on Zoom or something like that, I think we can work around that, instead of having the public meeting announced, but either way, it works. And then day two is December 1st, is eight through 12:00 p.m., where we'll have a meeting with local leaders on design. We'll meet with the Chamber of Commerce, meet with local leaders from economic development side, and the leaders in promotion and marketing, and then our leaders involved in other communities, civic efforts. And then the board will meet again and talk about those, what they've learned. As we move on into February, believe it or not, 2022, we'll move to transformational strategies, where they're gonna be sending out quite a bit of surveys, they've already sent me a survey, but we're under one right now, so we'll wait, they're sending a survey for small business owners in our area, that I'll be releasing in about three days. But that's not to do with this, there's another set of surveys where they'll survey the community as well as leaders, and just get an idea of what, you know, what their thoughts are, and what some great strategies might be basically like to see implemented as well. Through that, those will be onsite visits in February, and then there'll be a community public meetings with the Main Street Board present in an evening at six to eight p.m. as we start talking about the transformational strategies that we're gonna take forward. And then they get in the meeting with the Main Street Board, so we have some meetings, there's another meeting coming, hi Mayor. There's a meeting with Main Street Board in January, in which we will be with Coldwater, Roger City, and we'll actually be doing Main Street approach, modeled right by those H.A.C. board roles and responsibilities, or composition and recruitment. There'll be orientation and training for us and giving us organizational structure, and what the Main Street Board of Work looks like, and then leading through strategy, and a number of next steps that they're gonna place us into. So if you haven't met me or Laura, they are two excellent, I know you did, excellent pieces, resources that we're receiving as individuals, they're great, they've been helpful, they've been advocates for us as they went through this process to try to sell it for us, told us what to do. We worked on that application in detail, and we got it to where it was in good shape for to get a positive outcome. So as we move forward, we're fully aware, I think, at board level, that there's gonna be a lot of hands-on work, a lot of training, and a lot of detail that comes with this.
Dusty, when you say the Main Street Board, you're referring to what is now the DDA.
That's correct. And it's a great question, because it doesn't end at the DDA. The DDA was a way to start this, and it has, as you know, a TIF, and it also has the milage, and that's one of our cash flows. But as we expand the Main Street Board, they don't look at it as just that group of individuals. They look at it as volunteers that want to join that board, so we could considerably increase our board size with that impact. And there's also various committees that'll be formed and structured, where we want to reach out, get a lot of volunteer work done. Up until now, we've had plenty of volunteers. There's some that it gets stretched sometimes, obviously, but there are a lot of volunteers like Art Delicious and First Fridays, and a number of things that we see, and we don't count them on the board. I tried to explain this at Main Street, that, believe it or not, we do have volunteers that do a lot of things. We just haven't organized them and been effective about recruiting, and a number of those other weaknesses, I think, we still have. So when you think of the University of the College and trying to get those kids organized and get them effective, we've had our fair share of stumbles when that happens. We just have to get better at that volunteer organization and effectiveness. And it's one of their big efforts that they push forward. But as they get, they dig into the market information we're gonna get, we've done building inventories now downtown, Michelle and Greg worked hard on that, provided it to us so we could put it in application. I think we have best understanding, we've had so far, of what, where things lie downtown, what's open, what's not, what's happening in our downtown. But that director will have that knowledge and be able to, what's available downtown, what's happening with this building, what's happening with that building, what's the upstairs look like. They really get you into data gathering and details, and that director's gonna have quite a responsibility of providing that information, not only to us, but the Main Street Organization. They have three organizations helping us, not just Main Street Michigan, but then National Main Street sits as one of our training individuals as well, and they have somebody from the MEDC that'll be with us. I bring up the MEDC, this is their program, this is one of Gretchen's favorite programs, and it's one that has probably the biggest impact, she feels, and I think it's been around since previous governor. It's been around since 2011, to tell you the truth. So when we're doing applications for something like a brownfield or any other types of work in our downtown or in our city, there's a number of times you'll see the question, are you a Main Street organization? And the answer has been no so far, but today we could say yes now. And that gives us points on a number of fronts, and as you know, I'm a big believer in downtown redevelopment, and I think this adds a big piece to us. The technical assistance in the first five years is over $100,000, but that's not just what they do, they help facilitate projects and get us to the proper agencies, develop those relationships with those agencies, and get us some money. You know, there's a lot of these organizations, and we talk to them, they've landed some fantastic grants, money allocated to them to be effective in some of their projects in the downtown, and you see all kinds of things. So just visualize for a second, the Gene Christopher property changed into some, I'm not gonna say beer garden, because I'll bring up that, but, you know, changed it with the lights, the place to sit, and, you know, food, and the light, don't bring up food trucks. And just trying to make something like that happen with downtown and all the business owners and all the volunteers, and something we could rally on, as an example, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but it's something I would like to see happen. And then you see the amount of development that's going in downtown, a lot of money that's coming here right now. I don't think there's ever been a time where I want, would love to see our board, Main Street Board, as strong as ever, about being effective in communication with our downtown business owners, our building owners, and then to the general public. So I'm very excited, as you can tell, this is something I've been pushing for a couple of years. When we first went up there, we didn't know, you know, I can tell you, we didn't know what we were walking into, but they were gracious back then, and they shared with us what we needed to do to get back into the game for the Select Level. This was our last year and our last chance to, because we were already getting close out, and then we'd had to start the Engage Level all over, and I think we'd have lost the willpower, to tell you the truth. We would probably not push so hard. So I come back to thanking you, when I think of the commitment you made from not only supporting our flowers downtown, 60 new pots, and even water those, that you guys, I think of the electric cars station, that's you guys, new trees, that you guys. I'm glad that, you know, we offer up our opinions and what we'd like to see, that you guys keep executing on our behalf, and we know that. We absolutely know that, and we appreciate it a lot. It's gonna take a strong partnership between us and the commission going forward. Love to see you all involved in the groundwork that we're doing right now, as much as you can be, and to get those excited about it as well. If you've ever went to the Michigan Main Street, that's all you have to type in on Google, and you're gonna see everything. Everything that they offer, all the tools, all the programs are gonna bring our way, and so, pretty cool stuff. Questions?
Now that we, we've been approved, how long is that approval for? Is it a three-year, five-year term, or indefinite?
Great questions, five years, this is a five-year Select Level, you have to stay in the five years. The end game is Mastery Level. The end game is also being Main Street of America winner, you know, to win it. And what that means is that we will effectively make some placemaking in our downtown. We'll effectively build up buildings, we'll show a lot of progress as we move forward over the next five years.
As we move forward, are we being judged by them? At the end of five years, they pull the rug out from under us, like we don't?
I don't believe that's the way, I guess it could, if the organization, the Main Street organization sort of fell apart and didn't work. And I gave you guys that caveat when Chris came and sold us, the idea that you guys will know. You know, our five-year, your guys' five-year commitment, you'll know if it's not cohesive, it's not effective, if it's not making things happen. You guys are gonna be able to say, we're done, you know, whenever you need to. But I don't believe that's the way it's gonna come out. I do believe we're seeing a lot of passion, a lot of people learning a lot as we've gone through this. And as we reverberated, we'd love to see you guys reverberate it, it really means something. And there's only 24 of us in the state, and when they're allocating funds, we're just gonna get showed favor status. Really want, you know, hopefully I'll be able to share some big ideas that are coming down the pipe and with each of you, because there's a lot of ideas floating out there and a lot of excitement, so this gives us a chance to really access funds we need. Thank you, Mayor, for sitting there and supporting it through the whole process too, she's been watching since day one.
Dusty, how will your board change when it comes from an engagement standpoint? Like getting out there, getting on boots on the ground when it comes to that? I know it's one of the big things you pushed, you know, with this, is that, hey, on my board, kind of get up and get active.
That's right.
And not just show up at eight o'clock in the morning, kind of thing, so.
That's right, and so we're starting to see, and I would expect that there'll be some more turnover. So that's just gonna be upfront with you. What it took to get to this stage, what it took before that, what it took to get to this stage, and then as we evolve into this next stage, there's going to be some expectations set on us from Main Street. Those expectations are gonna lie on some people pretty heavy. They're gonna have a hard time putting it into their schedule and being as committed as they need to be. So I would guess we'll have another set of turnover where we have more active engagement. But this isn't the, we go to the meeting, we finish the meeting, and we've done our work. This means being out there, hands-on. That means everybody's out there pushing signage around, or building tents, or whatever it takes to make something happen. I will tell you this, there was a little piece of news that came last week that was pretty cool, and I want to give the kudos to Dave Thomas, y'all know him from Calvers. So Brana Colley was on the floor of the house, she calls him right after a vote, they fixed the Dara district. They had a problem with it, that if they had a nonprofit come out into the streets and sell alcohol, and none of the other restaurants could bring, sell any Dara. So when Boys and Girls Club came down here, they were not happy. And when the CrossFit tried to come out on the street, they were not happy, this was tough. Remember, they had to get it into Calvers, it was all because of this law. It's passed the House, it's going to the Senate, I think it's a breeze by, but you should have seen how excited Dave Thomas was. So nonprofits couldn't, anybody that was out there that was gonna sell alcohol in the Dara district, then prohibited any restaurant from selling Dara, providing.
Their rule was, we basically had to suspend the Dara district or the social district.
That's right.
Social drinking district during the time that a nonprofit had one of these special liquor licenses to sell on a separate basis, within the perimeter of the district.
Why were the Boys and Girls Club upset? They were, because they just couldn't believe that we instituted this. Institute this, so it couldn't happen again.
Because the way you make bank matters, the bar.
Gotcha. Yeah, they were, they were saying, oh, yeah, Sarah's like, made it impossible for us. We didn't mean to, because just south of the border in Ohio, they don't have that rule. So we were able to look at that and say, come on, come on. We got the idea, I think, out of Toledo, remember, it was Doron? They got it from Toledo. But Dave did all that work, by the way, I can't take credit except for the money after it. Except for the painted line, which is awesome.
That's Matt's idea.
I thought it was Will's.
That was Matt, Will doesn't like it, because it's blue, water, blue is supposed to mean water. I said, well, blue means don't dig there, so I don't want anybody digging there. So we're all good.
I think you're seeing a lot of excitement in our board, there's ideas floating, there's constantly looking for ideas for all of us to sort of jump on and be a part of in the downtown. I'm really happy with the board we have, I just have a feeling, like I said, once you start understanding how hard you're gonna have to work, it may change again. But these other communities rallied and succeeded, and I think we will.
Now the meeting on the 30th.
Yes.
Tell me again, is that face-to-face, or?
It'll be virtual, 30th and December 1st. When's ours? And you guys, this will be.
At four, four, four to four forty-five, so we all can't be a part of that unless we call it a meeting.
Right, so if you're all in there, theoretically, if you weren't talking about city business, you'd all still be there, but, you know, the safe thing would be to call that as a special meeting, just open. So if it's virtual, we have to publish some of that link like we do tonight, anybody can publish at that point. I don't think that a problem, I think.
Equally good, for us all to be able to show support of the program.
Right. I think probably meetings at five, all four posted.
We weren't sure at the DDA meeting, number day, if it was virtual or in person, because one thing said in person, and another thing said virtual, but then we thought we'd clarified that it was virtual for this, and then in February, we're gonna need to meet again with them, and that one will be in person. So that we thought that's what it was, but we were making sure and clarifying that.
Yeah, and they left us in your packets, impact report. So from 2018 and 19, earlier after that, at that time, there was 19.4 million in private investment, 10.35 came out of our state to our communities, to our First Friday, not First Friday, what do I say, Main Street communities. To our Main Street communities, and I keep thinking about this allocation of funds we're seeing right now, you know, the city level, the county level, state level, and we've been missing out on that 10.3 million. That's what drives me, that's what's driving me too, is that we should be a part of those 190 businesses. There was 100 facade improvement programs, we don't even have a facade improvement program in place. And I understand, you know, we haven't had a director per se, that should be one of our tools for sure. And there's a number of tools we don't have available right now because of structure, so we're gonna be putting those in place. Again, thank you.
Dusty, are you meeting with, I actually don't really answer this, I'm asking, are you meeting with businesses before this even occurs on December 30th? I just know that several have reached out to Greg and I, and are asking, and Greg has referred them on, or said, I'm not sure if it will, you know, if it will touch on what you're looking for, but they're asking a lot of questions already since this announcement, because they're not people that can regularly attend DDA, so they really, to those meetings, now Main Street meetings. But so they're just wanting information, and, you know, they're excited, but they don't really understand, and they want clarification, and I didn't know if there was something before that we could at least get in their hands to digest before they actually have that meeting.
Yeah, I wrote a letter of introduction on it, and then they put it on a Google forum, still kind of thing to answer your questions, you know, what recent business, that's not very personal. For me to engage them at an individual level, I'd be glad to walk through the whole downtown and try to talk to each and every one, let them get involved, I think all of us can sort of do that. It's gonna be a numbers thing, you know, so often we start the strategic planning, and we start the deep dives, and just, I remember going through it last year and the year before, when we did it with Michigan State in 2019, strategic planning. The first meeting, there's 40 people there, we're doing breakout groups, we're having a blast, we're digging all into it. The next meeting, there's 10, and the final meeting, there's six. And that's when you start thinking about, is this strategic plan valid? Is it really what it's supposed to be? Is it really heard from all the voices we want to hear from to add to this? Because that has been a weakness. So Mayor, I take that as an absolute, I'll make sure that you focus deeply on that. I would like to see 50, 60 people in these meetings.
Well, going along with what the mayor said, since there was an article in The Telegram, I've had, I don't know, about four or five people ask me about it, because they weren't, even after reading the article, they weren't really quite sure what this meant. And I think that even getting something up on, you know, whether it be the city's website or website and Facebook, would be helpful.
I'll make sure we do that. I have been on the radio, and I will be going back on the radio again about this, so you may have heard me on the Saturday morning programs. But I think we need to develop something for The Telegram as well, and get that out to everyone right away, get that out there in private, so everybody can get a better understanding of what it means to be a Main Street city.
And to let them know that we're gonna need a lot of volunteers.
Yeah, you know, I think there are volunteers just sitting there that just haven't been asked. It's just been hard to be organized and get that done. Like, you know, when you ask for volunteer, you don't say, can you just come join our Main Street organization? Or can you come to this event and do that? That's the problem, I think, we have quite often, is not setting that. Sure, we, I will say that we sat out and Michelle did a lot of this, and a lot, we sat out at the big First Fridays, and we asked, she had asked, would you be willing to volunteer? Would you be willing to make a financial contribution or be supportive of this in general? We found about 15 volunteers out, and that, and we didn't even work it that hard, we still can keep doing that. But we also found like 10 that said they'd make financial contributions. By the way, we have had a number of commitments, just to give you an update, as that you have made an investment in us. We have raised over 27, 28,000 pledges so far, and that's not even, I'm not even close to finishing our list. And now we can actually say we're select, so now we can say that we have a five-year commitment here. But there are some big families, big names, and then there's a lot of small families, there's a lot of $20 donations. And we've set up an apparatus where you can make those donations, so we'll be blowing that out to the airwaves. But remember, the responsibility of the Main Street is to pay for their own stuff. So when you think of the budget payroll, one big part of that pie, 35 doesn't cover it, right? We gotta cover the rest with our fundraising and our activities. This Dara development's big for us, because if we have an Art Delicious or something bigger, something much more impactful, you know, that's not impactful, but maybe something better where we can make some funds, that was gonna hinder us. As a matter of fact, when we had the Phoenix theories, yeah, we paid for that in the wash, doing sponsors. We weren't allowed to make any money that day, that was gonna be a big one for us, but it was because of the Dara restriction. But that was a great band, gonna have more stuff like that. Again, thank you guys for your partnership, couldn't do it without you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Dusty. Our next item.
Tonight, it's to schedule a review.
Which we're behind, and I will take full responsibility for, we were supposed to do this, and it completely got lost in the shuffle, so I deeply apologize for that. So we're a little bit behind, we're not really far, but we're just a little bit.
A couple months back.
Yeah, so.
Just matter of selecting a date, whether you want to do it at one of your regular meetings as part of that, or whether you want to do a special meeting, a special meeting Monday.
Didn't we do a review after you had been here six months?
Yeah, you did.
Yes.
Was that six months ago?
That, and that's why I must have.
Probably eight months ago now, but.
Yeah, it doesn't, it seems like we just did it, didn't it? Yeah, I know.
Okay. I vote at the end of the meeting, or, yeah, at the end of the meeting, to me, it's good, I mean, not, come just an extra day, just do that.
I feel like that too.
And that's just.
But we didn't know, you know, and that, and that was the thing too, is didn't know what everybody wanted to do, because there's an extra Monday in this month, because of the 29th, there's a fifth Monday. So do you care that we're putting it out a few weeks? I'm just saying, I don't mind, but I didn't know how everybody else felt.
I don't mind.
We've waited for some.
Yeah.
I like my actual Monday.
Especially if we're having an event Tuesday already. You're right about that. For Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
So we're meeting Tuesday, the 30th already, but I don't wanna meet Monday night, because we still have.
Were you thinking the sixth?
Yeah, that's the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting.
Is that even a meeting? Yeah, it would be.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Monday, the sixth, the first one of the month.
Yeah. We're on the agenda, yeah.
You know, but I think more importantly, we have to figure out how we're gonna do this.
Exactly.
Because this will be, for Alan and I, it's the sixth time that we've basically fumbled through this. And I think that we need to come up with a program that is something that can be long-term. And I know the first time that we did it, I was so upset, the form that we used was something that was. that we used was something that was pulled off online someplace and it didn't, wasn't relative to what we were doing at all. It was a waste of everyone's time. You know, I personally think that we need to pull up our strategic plan, base everything off the strategic plan, and then maybe come up with a, you know, good, better, best type of thing. This A B C D stuff is, you know, that's for grade school, and just come up with a, that way if we always work along those lines, you just have something that's more concrete. I think coming into this particular situation where even if we use the strategic plan as our base, it's flawed a little bit because of COVID and because of some of the other distractions that we've had to put up with over the last six months or so, but at least I still think the strategic plan gives us a good base to work from.
The only thing about the strategic plan is that we did that back when Administrator Horn was here, so like, you know, that's not, that's the last time we did it, and I was actually gonna bring this up tonight, it's like, you know, with, you know, with Commissioner Miller on now, it's like, you know, something with.
Just the two of you worked on the plan, the rest of us.
Right, that's my point, is that with the resources we have collectively at the city now and the vision, you know, maybe we should revisit the actual, not maybe a two-day event, like we used to, but not re-plan, you know, and, but he, you know, Greg has something he can measure himself on too, so, but had to hold him accountable for the strategic plan that we set may change, here reality is not.
Right, yeah, that's sort of what I was saying when I said, you know, COVID was part of that stuff too, but yeah, let's just tweak the plan, let's not try to rebuild it, because the last thing I wanna do is another strategic plan, although we did one a couple of years ago because we were at, we were in Tamara when we did it. It was, it was, we've done two of them.
It was Shane.
Oh, six years ago, five years ago.
No, that was eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah. Yeah. So it hasn't been that long ago, so that, it may not be that far out of date.
Gotcha.
In my scheme of work.
But, but, but I was saying, you know, if I was Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Casper, Commissioner Galsen, Mayor, I'd be like, you know, hey, it was like, I wanna have something put on what the vision is now, you know, because, you know, excuse me, you're four years and two more years, you know, and.
Well, I, I personally haven't revisited that strategic plan.
We got lots of time, I mean, we really.
But I mean, I haven't, I haven't, you know, sat down and looked at it. I personally think that it would just be minor tweaks.
Yeah, I think what Lance says is that the first one we did was like, you know, how does the administrator deal with staff in City Hall? We don't know, we don't, because we're not, we don't work in City Hall, you know, and so stuff like that is, had nothing to do with our evaluation of him, so it's kind of hard to gauge that a little bit.
I think what I'm hearing, or what I would take from what you're saying about using the strategic plan, is to come up with, what are the strategic plan objectives? Maybe there's ten of them, and then we do an assessment on whether those objectives should be something that city administrator should be, you gotta rate that. I don't know if all of them should be, but there, it's not necessarily everything in the strategic plan, or, I don't know, but that's, that's what I'm thinking, is what were the objectives of the strategic plan and how, how does the administrator's job relate to those objectives? Does that make sense at all?
Yeah, just sort of goals for the city, and basically it was the city administrator is trying to make sure that we achieve those goals, and some of them may be, you know, we may look at some of them and go, well, okay, this is a goal that the administrator doesn't have a lot of control over.
Or we voted it down, we said, oh, you know, we wanted a parks, you know, redo the parks department, but we just did that, so we can't assess that goal, that strategic plan goal, based on what Greg has done so far in that area.
Well, I think basically we need to get a copy of the strategic plan we can all look at, and it makes no time.
Right.
I have it somewhere. I have it, so, I don't know where.
We've got a date, we got an idea of how to do it.
Yeah.
How does reviewing the strategic plan give Greg quality data to use?
That's, and that's, I hear ya.
Good and bad, like.
Because like, you know.
What can we work on, what can we, you know, what have we done well? How does that give him the data that he needs to?
I think what it does is I can say, okay, this is, this is a, a point that this is something that we want to drive the city in this direction, and if we think that Greg is taking us in that direction, we can say, yeah, we think that he's meeting the goals of this particular point, or, you know, maybe he hasn't spent enough time with this, and, you know, and, and again, it's not so much a pass or fail, but it's, you know, good, better, best type of thing, and we just, we have these bullet points that we can go through, but it's, and, and I think it would put the strategic plan in the front of Greg's mind more than it is now, and I, I don't point a finger at him, but it's not in the front of my mind. I was part of the, part of the group.
I think it gives us an opportunity to talk about what's important to us now, not what it was important four or five years ago.
Right.
And so as we sit down, we may, may not, may be making judgments on this performance, but lot, you know, allowing a conversation about, here's what we think, you know, we want, we expect, and that will give us something to carry forward in the future.
I do, is I, you know, the three managers I have, I sit them in front of me, I said, this is, you know, these are what I think you're improving on, and this is what you need to improve on, how can I help you achieve my vision for the company? Right, and he needs to know what, how we, what our vision is so he can implement it, and he's had clear decisive, because I agree with you, he needs to have a clear measurement so he can be able to see, all right, well, they said I need to improve on this, but, but my strengths are here, so I'm gonna go work on that, so, so I get totally what you're saying, so, but what's the formula we use? That's the question, you know, and.
When you say formula, you're saying.
Because, because if I were in his shoes or any, because I don't work for anybody in my private life, but if I was getting evaluated, I wanna know what my, you know, how am I doing, like, you know, when it comes to what my strengths are, what my weaknesses are, you know, and then I wanna open my superiors, you know, how can, how can they help me achieve my, you know, the goals they want me to implement, you know, kind of thing, so what's the, what's the formula to use to evaluate him or anybody, essentially, you know, to make sure that he gets there?
So you can say, I guess we could all say, we could all do our own evaluation and say, on this particular thing, you're doing great, on this particular issue, there's room to improve, on this particular issue, you've fallen down.
That just gives an opinion of that we all have, and I think we need to be able to give collective direction.
But would, would you be giving collect, collective direction if everybody did that? And then you could say, okay, four people said room to improve, two said great, I mean, that, is that good enough, or is that?
Greg, you weren't here in two thousand.
I have a problem with evaluating someone on something that he had, he and us had no idea he was going to be evaluated on. I, I don't think that's fair to the employee.
When you read it, it's, this is that, you know, these are basic concepts.
Yeah, review and revise financial methods and funding options. Create a community communication campaign, maintain entire city as developmental ready, sustain effort to leverage community investments, citywide energy optimization accountability program, initiate ambulance transport, employer department, and city commission administrator assured accountability of those seven goals. And then there's a bunch of action steps under it, but my, my question, my statement is, have, have, did you even know that things were action steps?
And there are enough of that to grade him on that.
Because I feel like I've forgotten about this, and I, I'd have to really look through these goals to say, yes, we've done this, but I didn't even realize we were doing it at the time, or wow, we really have not, as a commission, focused on these things, and that should not be a reflection on our city administration.
That's why I said, you know, COVID and things have sort of changed that, and this is just sort of a basis, and that can be changed. It's a guide for this very first time, and yeah, we, we would need to tweak it moving forward, but at least it's something, otherwise we don't have anything.
That suggests that, you know, a review doesn't have to be backward looking necessarily, review could be forward looking. I only know the review I had, but I don't remember Nathan Bruce saying, well, his reviews were kind of like conversations.
Yeah.
I took from that that they were a discussion of where you wanted him to go in the next year coming up. Certainly, the strategic plan could be a tool for assisting that kind of assessment, if that's what you're.
But I would love to know his opinion of that, like, did he feel like he got enough of that just by the kind of roundtable, so maybe he told you, I don't know, we'll talk about a meeting, you wanna tell me what he really said? No, I, I don't know if he really got, I mean, because somebody is, I mean, Nathan's former council member, I mean, he knows how it works, so did he feel like he got enough out of that review? He's like, all right, here's what they want, and, and let me go carry it out, kind of thing, so.
Maybe not, but.
There you go.
I also don't, also don't think he was disappointed.
Right, right, oh, sure.
I was like.
But the thing was, I, I felt like it was pretty informative, I felt like everybody said what they wanted to say, and at the end, Nathan had a chance to talk too, and I thought that was really, really good. I mean, he was very prepared, and so we had some very good dialogue. I personally felt like the meeting was over, everybody had a better idea of where, where we needed to go as a group, and I think that he, he felt better too, at least, that's how I walked out of the room.
I think evaluations can be very, very supportive. The working document that is very fluid from time to time and step to step, sometimes we can have a strong vision about what we think that evaluation should be, evaluations can be a double-edged sword, and evaluators sometimes have no business doing what they're doing. We have to watch how we travel to constructing an evaluation, so it is constructive, so it is supportive, so it is forward-thinking and futuristic in its approach, where are we now and where are we going?
See, right now, we don't have that really solid working document, but, but the strategic plan is probably the best that we have moving forward right now. It's something.
Yeah.
What do we do? We're trying. Yeah. Without it, we might as well go online, download what we did with Shane Horn.
Yeah. Oh.
An open discussion can also be very informative, it was structured correctly. We have it outlined, we have some parameters, we have, and also, so it doesn't go down to a bunch of people who's. Have a structure to it, have a very informative, so.
You know, it's also opportunity for the person being, being evaluated to throw out their ideas on how things could be better, and, you know, so times, you know, so many times in the past in my career, you give, you would give evaluations, and the person being evaluated would start sharing ideas that you didn't even, you never thought of, and you, and you never thought to ask, and there's nothing wrong with that either. If we're sitting here as a group doing an evaluation, and Greg's got an idea, so you don't, have you guys ever thought of, of this, rather than just telling me what, what you want? Have you ever thought about this, or have you ever thought about why I do the things that I do that sometimes you don't like? But let me tell you why, and, and I think that's important too.
But when we did Nathan's evaluation, I can't tell you anything that I said or anything that anybody else said except for what Nathan said, doesn't he?
Well, and that can be important.
Well, we got three weeks to get the process.
We can get our act together.
And I do know, you know, as other, as time permits, but do you not have to bring up a few points?
Yeah, I do, not knowing that, but yeah.
No, exactly.
Things, potential agenda items for you, like, that were not on your published agenda. First one I'll mention is the half day before Thanksgiving, which has sort of been a tradition here, of late, going back. But I know that you had, and that would normally be on this agenda if you were going to grant that, it's never been adopted as an official city holiday, and when we had three holidays, official holidays this year, there was some discussion about this half day and whether that would be a thing going forward or not, I don't recall where you all came down on that, so, staff, some of the staff asked us today if that was something that we were, we were gonna do again this year, obviously we didn't put it on the agenda, but, throw that out there for you, if you're interested in doing that again this year, we have a resolution prepared.
I thought we agreed on it.
I thought we had to. Wait, wait, when you, when you reached out to me, I'm like, I really thought we did, but.
Did we agree to continue it?
That's what I thought.
I think, I think we've done it ever since I've.
I thought we did.
I thought we should pass a resolution that it would.
We didn't, we didn't make that one of the official holidays.
Oh, is that what?
We can, we can fix it for this year and then.
Okay.
Official holiday.
When we do the calendar next year.
All right.
So I've got, I'll give you a resolution to pass around that. That item. The other item. Kristen had the owners of the Cameron Building come to her with this beat girl after the agenda deadline with an application for Oprah District for that building. Oprah's absolutely property revitalization act that essentially increases the taxable value so that, through the property, for a period of time, it pays a cap taxable value on redevelopment, we've done it in the past, we did a bunch of structural, building, a lot of other properties. It is late, the State Tax Commission likes to see these in October, they wanted to try to get it in this year, see if it's possible, so she has a, a resolution prepared here, have that and a copy of the application. All we would ask you to do tonight is not take any action on that, but just set up a public hearing for December sixth, if you're so inclined, so that they can have a shot at getting their application, it's still in this calendar here, if you're willing to add that, might, that resolution and a copy of that application.
All we're doing is freezing their taxes at the current level.
Well, all we're doing tonight would be setting a public hearing on that question for December sixth, but that's what that would, that's what, what the application would request.
Okay.
Since it's setting a public hearing, do we, are we going to amend the consent agenda?
do we, are we going to amend the consent agenda?
Uh, you could. Could put it on the, amend the consent agenda, could put it on there. If I get that a resolution out, because we don't know where it's going to go yet.
I just thought about that, because I know we sat public hearings before and consent agenda since we've gone to that. But since it's an amendment, this is just my, that's why I'm asking. Because it's an amendment, I don't feel comfortable putting it in the consent agenda. That's just my opinion. I feel like it looks shady, and it's like hidden down in there then. And so my opinion is not to do that. Why I was asking that question, and I didn't get a chance to ask you that earlier, but I feel that it needs to be very transparent and not hidden in the consent agenda because of a being an amendment.
Certainly your fault. Either, it doesn't have to be that.
Are you, are you all okay with that being in the regular agenda? I just don't feel comfortable with it being in the.
I got your copy here.
One seventy, one seventy.
Yeah, they did.
Hey, that's all I have. So, Mayor.
Yes, I need a, are we okay with pointing right to public comment? Because we're almost excited. Okay. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, please state your name and address.
King Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter Street, of course, written numerous times. This time, I'd like to say, I'm glad you're not putting in the consent agenda, and we just now decided to add it. But I'm glad you're not putting on the consent agenda, like consent, or more so because it's something that's. Thank you for bothering me to do that. I didn't think you guys had talked about Thanksgiving half day before. That's all I have for now.
Hearing now another public comment, uh, may I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry. Yes, wasn't on here. Mr. Comment, sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick thing. Um, I'd like to thank Greg, Matt, whoever, uh, but the alley lights between yoga studio and Joanne's still building target for the first time.
Years.
Mayor, just go ahead to the regular gang, and I'll tell you all about Kathleen Griffiths is from, uh, the Louie's office and sitting in for him tonight, so.
Good evening.
Hey, Kathleen.
Yes.
No, sorry.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Can you go reconvene in five minutes approximately? I call to order the Adrian City Commission for meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and seventy from the City Commission to approve the closure of city facilities on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at twelve P M. And give all full-time and regular part-time city employees a paid half-day off. And to also add Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and seventy-one from administration, the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate, public hearing, and to set that public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R twenty-one one seventy from the City Commission to approve the closure of city facilities on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth at twelve P M. And give full, all full-time and regular part-time city employees a paid half-day off. And to add Resolution R twenty-one one seventy-one to set a public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate was approved by an all yes vote.
May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Health with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. Yes. Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Moving on to the regular ordinances. We have a first reading and introduction only. This will be ordinance twenty-one dash zero ten. First reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning and development regulations, Article Five, Sections five point zero to five point two, and Article twenty-five, Sections twenty-five point zero two, twenty-five point zero five, twenty-five point eleven, and twenty-five point fifteen through twenty-five point eighteen with regard to childcare facilities. Moving on, special order dash one, public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the completion of the downtown rental rehab grant under the Michigan Community Development Block Grant Program. So at this time, I will call that public hearing to order. If anyone wants to comment, they may do so at this time. Hearing no comment. I call this public hearing closed, and we will be moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and sixty-six is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint a mayor pro tem. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
I mean, we need to elect somebody, sorry.
Need a name?
Yes, we need a name to go with that.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Alan Halt for that position.
Support.
Second.
Yes. Okay, so we have a, a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tem as Commissioner Alan Halt. Is, are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss to appoint Mayor Pro Tem for Commissioner Alan Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Alan Halt, Commissioner Alan Halt as mayor pro tem is approved by an all yes vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and sixty-seven is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint an acting mayor. May I get a motion to appoint and adopt the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kelly Castleberry to that position.
Support.
So we have a motion to appoint as acting mayor, Commissioner Ca- Kelly Castleberry. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Health to appoint as acting mayor, Commissioner Kelly Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Kelly Castleberry's acting mayor is approved by an all yes vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and sixty-eight is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint a city official to the planning commission. May I get a motion to appoint and adopt this resolution?
I move to appoint Commissioner Mary Roberts to city official, to be the city official on the planning commission.
Support.
I have a motion to appoint Commissioner Mary Roberts to the planning commission as the city official. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss to appoint the city official as, um, Commissioner Mary Roberts to the planning commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Support.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Mary, Commissioner Mary Roberts as the, the city official to the planning commission is approved by an all yes vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and sixty-nine is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to reappoint Monica Savage to the Adrian District Library Board for a three-year term. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Or.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and seventy is from the City Commission. It is, it is to approve the closure of city facilities on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at twelve P M. And give all full-time and regular part-time city employees a pat, a paid half-day off. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Health and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and seventy-one is from administration. It is to set a public hearing for the obsolete property rehabilit- rehabilitation exemption certificate for one fifteen, one seventeen, one nineteen, and one twenty-one South Main Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The motion to set the public hearing at the, at the next commission meeting is approved by all yes vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any comments or questions on those reports?
Mayor.
Commissioner Roberts.
I'd just like to say, I really, I don't know if enjoy, but I appreciate receiving the inspection reports and all of the movement that we are gaining. And it's, it's really fascinating to see what's commented on and what's been taken care of. So thank you for including the reports with our packets.
Moving on to public comment, we are going to start in-house first with public comment. And then, once we are finished with public comment, we will open it up for Zoom. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, which you will see on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and address. But we will start inside first.
King Ramos, homeowner for twenty-two South Winter Street. Do you know me by this party? Most of you do. Um, just keep it brief. It's now getting dark out sooner, so hopefully all see that the lighting really does suck on a lot of the, around lots of parts of the city. Hope you'll take notice of that and hope you'll make some plans to start, uh, addressing some of that street lighting in the future and some of the park lighting. And I assure you, I'll let you know about A three stuff at like the next meeting when it's a little closer. Um, and that, I still don't know why we left those Christmas tree lights up all year round, but it's almost that time again. Thank you.
At this time, we will open up public comment for those on Zoom. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Health.
I also say thank you to my peers. Um, it's pretty cool to be elected by the public twice, but just as cool to be elected by your peers. So, thank you.
I would also like to welcome Commissioner Miller to his first meeting, and thank you for your input. He was already giving input in a pre-meeting, and we appreciate it, and, uh, we're very glad to have you here on the City Commission with us. So, welcome.
Thank you to everyone. Thanks so much.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Gauss. All in favor, say aye.
Actually.
Was it?
Commissioner.
I thought it would, it sounded.
That's all.